I just got a message, this meeting is being recorded.
Yeah, that's a new one.
Yeah.
So make sure every meeting attendee knows that they're being recorded on Zoom.
Whoa.
Sure.
I feel really important now.
Just now.
Billy, welcome back.
Important a long time now.
She hear me? I don't think she can hear me. I said, welcome back.
It's nice to be here.
Just in time for the car show. Time for the car show.
Yeah, for what change I get to go and walk through it.
Yeah.
Since I'm not doing the book sale.
Yeah, rub that in.
We're going. Yeah. Now.
Are you going to the mill tomorrow night? They have in the food trucks.
Oh, they are?
Yeah.
I didn't know about it.
I got a message this afternoon, but yeah.
What time is it, Danny?
Um. God, I just sent it. I think it's like five o'clock to seven thirty, something like that.
Okay.
Yeah. I got a message from the mill about it earlier.
Maybe I haven't checked my, my emails.
Yeah, check your emails, yeah. Yeah, you're talking about the food trucks?
Yeah.
Yes, five thirty to seven.
Five thirty, so, okay.
Um, Rick Holmes is not going to be able to make it. He's in Nashville, Tennessee, and has a work conference tonight, so.
You do?
Alrighty.
There's Carl.
I was going through the work packet for tonight, thinking we were just having a heavily laden meeting, and when I pull out last week's minutes, it's, oh, that's where all that paper is from.
That's why Jim chopped all those trees down, I'm telling you.
Yeah.
You know, that's why he's going to the Chromebooks for us.
Yeah, yeah.
Makes sense.
I think I put that little halo right above my head.
How lovely.
How appropriate.
I hope somebody thinks that way. We'll give it another minute, just to stay at seven o'clock rhythm and everybody's here, that's gonna be here, I believe.
Julie, when did you get back?
Like about twelve thirty Wednesday night, I drove like from eight thirty till I got home.
Wow.
I mean, I stopped a few times, but that was the second day of driving. It's okay. It's good. Yep.
I used to make that trip three or four times a year.
Yeah, I didn't, I didn't hug the Mississippi. I kind of just went inland because I didn't want to run into that bridge that was cracked over the Mississippi.
Well, that probably was some hurt.
Well, it is seven o'clock. Officially called to order tonight's village council regular session at Monday, June third.
June seventh. June seventh.
Changed that, I didn't. Thank you. So we'll say the pledge of allegiance. Pledge allegiance.
Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
We'll take a minute of silence and then Jim, when you're ready, if you take roll call, please.
Roll call for June seventh, trustee Merrill. Trustee Reaster.
Here.
Trustee Wagner.
Here.
Trustee Keller.
Here.
Trustee Olson.
Here.
President Frisbee.
Here.
I believe with permission, trustee Holmes is excused on any business trip. Absent.
We have an agenda in front of us. Jim advised me there was one change. Do we want to note that now, Jim?
Yes, under ten C, seek free crandall, I know to not have an amount that we're plugging into the budget, but that, that'll be twenty seven thousand five hundred dollars. So it's an amount not to exceed twenty seven thousand five hundred dollars.
Are there any other questions the council would like to add? Well, hearing none, uh, entertain a motion to approve the agenda.
So moved.
Support.
Trustee Merrill moved with support from trustee Reaster to approve the agenda. Roll call vote trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. Do we have an agenda in front of us? It was good to hear Lee's voice. We could hear you nice and strong and clear this time. Good to have you back in Vicksburg.
Thank you.
I see there's no scheduled appearances. Do we have any one on the things that would like public official, Jim?
No scheduled appearance or public official scheduled appearance, sir.
All right, so we will take this time for citizens' comments on an agenda, non-agenda items.
We do. Yeah.
Right, Jim.
We have five people on the call, three members of the Parks and Rec Committee, Ms. Coney and I think it's Chief McMillan. So everyone appears to be on a computer. If you wish to speak during this time, if you move your cursor on your screen, it will, at the bottom, you can hit the button to raise your hand to speak in front of the council. We'll give it a few more minutes. I'm pretty confident everyone on the, on the call does know how. Again, if you are on a phone, you would hit star nine to raise your hand. But again, move the cursor over, you'll see at the bottom, raise hand, go ahead and click on that. We'll call on it. Give it a few more seconds. And I do not see anyone who's raised a hand, Mr. Frisbee.
All right, thank you. So we have a consent agenda with the minutes from May seventeenth, warrant reports, events, and correspondence. Everyone had an opportunity to review that document. Like I said, it's a, it's a whole tree. Well, well done, Jim, if I may add, in capturing all the information on that last meeting. Thank you. Does anyone have any corrections or additions, changes? If not, I'd entertain a motion to approve consent agenda.
Trustee Wagner, I move we approve the consent agenda.
Trustee Olson, I second it.
General consent agenda, motions made by trustee Wagner, supported by trustee Olson. Here no further conversation or comments. The roll call vote, trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes.
Prove the general consent. So we have some council items, action items for us tonight for the twenty one, twenty two full year budget. Parks and Recs, Historic Village, Oswalt Park, Vicksburg Recreation Park, Sunset Lake Beach Park, and Clark Park to kick them off. And Jim, I know there's, there's a lot in here. Did you want, we want to go over each item individually?
I, I was, I, I think it can be supported together. This will just be the amounts we plug into the budget that's presented on June twenty eighth. But in the document, and we make this document available to anyone, it gives a summary of our twenty fourteen Parks and Recreation Plan, the classification within our parks. There's six different classifications. It could be, we use four of them for our different park areas. I've also listed out the fiscal year budget investments going back to the seventeen eighteen, and I think that demonstrates past going on. This will be the fifth fiscal year of a commitment for a vibrant Parks and Recreation Program. And both staff and the council support and approval. We were impacted by COVID in this last fiscal year as we started out, if you will, the parks season closed down following the state of Michigan guidelines. But looking specifically, and I'll be happy to answer any questions on previous years if council has those. But specific to the twenty one, twenty two fiscal year, staff continues to recommend a vibrant Parks and Recreation Budget. The total dollar amount would be three hundred and twenty eight thousand five hundred dollars. The, and I can go by, by the order, we're looking at investment of a complete makeover for Oswalt Park. We are looking at fundraising a substantial portion of this to do. One of the, and that's at two hundred and twenty five thousand. And so part of the support and approval from the council will approve appointing our, our past council president, Bill Adams, to be the chairperson for this fundraising campaign. We hope to raise seventy five thousand dollars from the community. The second item within this would be to approve the village manager to submit two separate grants involving this park. We've had an initial formal meeting with members of the MEDC on their patronicity grant, which is a fifty thousand dollar matching grant. We will have a follow-up meeting. I think it's the week of June fourteenth. But also then we would be submitting a grant request to the Vicksburg Foundation for an additional fifty thousand dollar match. That request would go to the foundation in September of this year. So basically, we're looking at, for every dollar, the first fifty thousand dollars raised by members of the commu-, or from our community would be matched if approved by those two entities. The and then you can see where, where other dollars involving that would, would make up the two hundred and twenty five thousand. There would only be twenty thousand out of the twenty one, twenty two fiscal year. So if it's okay with you, Mr. Frisbee, I'll kind of pause there to see if there's any questions.
Yeah, that's fine. If, if anyone has some questions, I know it's a very long document. I took quite a bit of time today. One of the things I really appreciated was the, the goals that they've set forward, if I may. Goal one, maintaining existing community parks, rec facility. Goal two, expand and develop new parks, rec facilities. Goal three, develop facilities and non-motorized transport. Goal four, partner with other entities to provide recreational opportunities. Goal five, develop a comprehensive park identification signage program. And goal six, maintain and improve the natural aesthetic qualities of the park. And goal seven, of course, is maintain fiscal responsibility. I think that says a lot. You know, you set your objectives and your, your, your what's going to lead this forward. We've, you've identified the money is going to spend, where it's going to be spent at very, very well. And I think it was a very good document, well laid out. So if there's anyone that would like to ask questions on this, please do so now.
Hey Jim, trustee Keller, what's the what's the start date if, if this goes for Oswalt Park? What, what timeframe are you looking at?
Well, we, we would look at kicking off the fundraising in the month of August and that we would kick that fundraising off in conjunction with the state matching grant money. And we would hope to be in a position to go out to formal bids the, just after Labor Day, and we would, within those bids, we would give both construction season, be it a very short fall season, but our goal would be to have the makeover completed prior to Memorial Day of twenty twenty two, the following spring at the latest. I did, and I would have the ability right now. We had to develop a conceptual drawing on what the park would look like. I, I don't know if, Mr. Frisbee, if you want me to bring that up, I'm in a position to screen share that.
I don't know, you, you, I've seen it, and I don't know if the other council members have. I saw that it was sent out earlier this afternoon, so let's, let's put it up. Yeah, good idea, Jim. I think it's phenomenal. I, Jim gave me the opportunity to, to, to discuss it. Gail's had an opportunity. We talked to a couple of different people in the community, and it is, I think this final one is a really good fit for the community. Jim, you can kind of elaborate on what you were, you know, what staff was trying to accomplish and how it fits the, the theme of the village right now.
Right. So we asked the person who developed the, the streetscapes above ground, the landscape architect within the infrastructure project. So we wanted to continue that type of a theme, but also be aware that this is within our social district. So to make it a public space that people were comfortable to hang out in, if fitting that theme, we wanted to extend the usability throughout the calendar year of that space. So we asked them to incorporate different heat sources. We also wanted some activities. We did say that the one thing we wanted left in the park was the tree that we use for the Christmas in the village and the lighting ceremony. And that if there is a time capsule there, if we had to relocate that as well as the sign identifying the history of the park, that, that would be appropriately placed too. Some of the features, obviously, the center is a gas fireplace with multiple chairs in red. Everything in red is, is individual chairs. And then you have quads of four here, as well as these, these are twenty chairs will fit here on a trellis bar on both sides of this new walkway. I think that we have a four-foot fence, so it gives a good boundary of the social district and identifying the park. We've incorporated bag games set for adults and a set for kids. But it, it's truly, to me, amazing what, what an architect can do with sixty five by ninety four foot space. So this is to scale, will fit the, the purple, obviously, is the more of a cover and shade. It also has strained lights that would be timed on top of it. And we set the times those would come on and, and turn off. But this type of heating structure is used, has been used in Holland, Midland, and I believe they most recently put one in Whitehall. I hope I have that town correct. But we're, we're, we look forward to it. It stays in the same type of, we're gonna take the sidewalks out wider to the north edge of the park as well as the alleyway that's on the east side of Main Street there. But again, I'll pause and then answer any questions or listen to comments.
Hey Jim, trustee Wagner. I think the drawing looks great. I mean, that's, that's, looks like it's going to be a really fun space, but one question. So if we're going to be entertaining a lot more seating and folks downtown in this area, are public restrooms consideration we're making at this time? I'm, I just know with bringing up the sewer and the water with this project, I thought it might be something worth considering.
Uh, the expense of that would, would be considerable, so it's not developed into the plans as we sit right now.
Thank you.
I think it's going to be a great focal point for downtown. It's going to be something that will draw people right to it. I, I'm very excited about it.
And I see Julie Merrill.
Um, Jim, are those purply bubbles? Are those trees?
Those are shade areas.
Okay, because that's really needed. There was no shade on the south side of that park. So you would sit there and just roast. So it's kind of nice that some trees are getting put in to the south and the west to give some shade. And is this all going to be hardscape except for the perimeters with the fence and plantings? Is it going to be like concreted or? I don't know.
It, it, the only concrete would, would be the sidewalk, the, but it's, it's not grass in these hangout areas. I, well, it's, I hate using the word astroturf because it's not that either, but it's a it's a surface that's, that's put down.
Okay.
That'd be cooler.
Yeah, it's not where we'll be mowing it in that.
Good. That's good.
Jim, do you happen to have any examples of that trellis bar, like of other places that have got one that I could just look up and?
Yeah, I, yeah, sure, I can, and we're gonna make sure that this is viewable as we move forward. But I will get copies of that and distribute out.
That'd be great. I'd like to see it, too.
Yeah, and with the landscape architect, do you know if we're going to get like a, you know, like an actual rendering of this as a part of the process?
As, as part of the budget presentation on the twenty eighth, and this is pre, we've identified up to twenty five thousand dollars to be able to have beginning in the month of July on this project, which would get us to the engineered drawings actually, as well as take us all the way through the bid process. And we have saved up non-general fund money to identify that. So our, our, it would be certainly no later than the September meeting in, that we're planning to have in the pavilion, that we would have those completed.
Sounds great. Thank you.
Yeah.
I was talking, talking to a resident earlier over the weekend, and I don't know his history with the village or what, but I was showing it to him. He goes, oh, great. That, that looks like a great boondoggle. And I, no, no, this is, this is going to be fundraising grant money. Goes, oh, I love the place. It's kind of funny. Anytime we approach this, they assume they get out of general funds, but by no means is, is that the, the, the point and the idea. I think we're all in agreement. I don't know if we need a motion on Mr. Adams and Mr. Bill Adams. Would, would you like, like a support for him?
I, I'm comfortable either way. I'm also comfortable if the document in totality is supported, and that's all eight items as we go through it. And then, just so the council is aware, the final approval comes June twenty eighth. So there'll be an open-ended on all of these points we've discussed the last few meetings. If all of a sudden in reflection, a council member wants to make comments or have specific questions on June twenty eighth, will be, that time would be provided as well.
Well, I think we, they have the support for Bill Adams specifically, and I think everything that you've laid out. There's a lot here to review and talk about. So anyone other than Oswalt Park, any other comments or questions, the way you've laid it out very well.
Yeah, if I can, I think if I can, just real quick, it'll take two minutes, because there's two items I wanted to make note of. In order, the pickleball courts, to be able to have three pickleball courts, that idea first came out of the Parks and Rec, a one-on-one conversation with a, with one member there propelled into Mr., a, a local resident approached me. It was a great idea. We have an existing pad at the Little League. Fits perfect. But I, what I wanted to spend just a, a few seconds is on the Historic Village because we made a pretty significant move last year to make sure that we're in a best practice mode. And the historical, historic society, historical society was, call it lease, call it rent, was at twelve thousand dollars. We did in midstream that la-, the fiscal year we're in now, we had the village absorb the utility cost for the month of December, and that was spurred by Alex Lee heading up the group that did Christmas card lane there, and we plan on that really expand in this year. So we've met with the three members and a fair, which has been presented to them, they agreed with. We lowered that to ten thousand five hundred for this fiscal year. On the other side of the ledger, we, we have almost twenty thousand dollars of investments going in to, to that area. The recreational parks, another air, area that has, and what we're looking at utilizing is all this open space and attractions that people come into that the village is in control of to begin to, to drive that traffic downtown. So we have a mural, a mural to be painted on the building out there. It's kind of growing up along the outside of it. DPW will clear all that area, and we have two artists will be showing that mural in a, in a future meeting. But it's basically getting people aware to visit historic downtown Vicksburg, and then as well the tops of the eighteen disc golf holes to have those remade. They're all faded out there, have them remade, but incorporate a QR code, which what will develop with Donnie Gladstone, Gladstone Associates, and that'll connect to a revolving banner on our website where we can put fifteen things that, that we as staff control, the messaging for people out at the disc golf course. So I'm pretty excited about those two items. Sunset Lake Beach is, is covered, Clark Park, Dogway Stations and Smoking Station Butt Huts. One of the things as well I wanted to highlight, Mr. Frisbee, was to, we're moving this village to a consistent look in our signage. And you'll see, we started with the municipal parking lots by the post office and behind Main Street. We're gonna keep that look consistent. We have approved a sign to go out on Sprinkle Road, identifying the rec park in, in that same scheme as the parking signs. But we want to move that into the parks. And we'll get to that later, specifically when we talk about park rules, but it is a, a part of this document of why that we want the signage to look consistent and professional. And so I'll pause there for any questions.
Jim, Danny. Yes, sir. Real quickly, you touched on the trail system, TU Avenue in, in North. When are we scheduled to hook up with the city of Portage on that?
I'm going to have to contact them because the, the, we're up to the city limits of Portage. I believe that the, the money that was awarded to Portage through CATS is, becomes accessible to them this fall. I don't know where they are on the property or route. or route that they're bringing, but I, I will follow up at the next council meeting with those details. I'll reach out, to the city of Portage and find out.
Yeah, I'll ask some questions at the CATS meeting too, so maybe I can, get a little more info. Thank you.
Hey Jim, a word on the signage. I, I'd been approached by a few people around town and, they noticed the inconsistencies in the signage, just like you mentioned, so I just wanna say, thank you and to the Parks and Rec, I'm sure it came from as well. I heard it in that meeting too, but thanks for, helping with this consistency. I think it's gonna do a great job in, uh, you know, improving our image around town.
If it's okay, Mr. Frisbee, I'll move on to ten B. On ten B, uh, just real quick, it put a document in reference the retirement benefits. And, um, I think it, it's to highlight, the Village of Vicksburg entered into, it's a municipal employee retirement system, or we identify it as MERS in the nineteen sixties. And, uh, we have an agreement with them that would continue that. A defined benefit plan, most often known as a pension, is a retirement account, for which the employer is responsible to invest and manage to ensure, the promised amount will be paid out to eligible employees throughout the remainder of their life after retirement. A defined contribution plan, like a 401K or 403B, requires a specific monthly investment. And at the time of retirement, the retired employee is responsible to manage the amount of money. Financial liabilities are substantially more to an employer offering a defined benefit pension versus defined contribution. Village of Vicksburg stopped offering a defined benefit pension to any new employee hired, non-police officers in two thousand eighteen. The village continues to offer the Vicksburg Police Officers Association members a defined benefit program. This MERS Police Division is ninety percent, ninety-eight percent funded, and it remains an incredible recruiting, and retention benefit for a profession that is moving towards a scarce workforce. Beginning in July of two thousand eighteen, new employees are offered a defined contribution pension program. At the time of this change, the MERS Annual Actuarial Valuation Report, so in two thousand eighteen, MERS professionally, identified, did it, they do it every year, but they estimated, the Village of Vicksburg defined benefit liabilities for the twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal years would be three point three million dollars. It also, or the total liabilities, the fiscal year liabilities, would total a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, and the estimated funding percentage level would be at sixty-four percent. So in straight layman's terms, this, they estimated a short three years ago that this village would spend a hundred and fifty-one thousand dollars, in pension liabilities in the fiscal year. Due to the change in benefit programs, the actual, liabilities to the program are just over three million dollars. Three million forty-four thousand and change. So that's a decrease of two hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars, to financial liabilities to this village. The actual twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year liabilities are a hundred and four thousand two hundred and eight dollars. The, the change in benefits that occurred in two thousand eighteen, has resulted in a fiscal year savings in the proposed twenty-one, twenty-two fiscal year budget, for the Village of Vicksburg taxpayers of forty-six thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars. Um, and, uh, the, also, this is the first.
You're on mute.
Welcome back.
I appreciate it. How much did I get in?
You stopped at, um, uh, you, you were gonna talk about the change in the benefit, which is now forty-six thousand. You haven't done that yet.
Yeah, basically, I think that's a highlighted. We've, we've, the, the council decision in two thousand and eighteen, to move to a defined contribution program, save the taxpayers this year, three short years later, forty-six thousand seven hundred and ninety-two dollars this year alone. It also is the first year it's identified as twenty forty, to, that will, liabilities will end for the Village of Vicksburg. Um, that's a short, uh, nineteen years from now, and, and it will go by quick. In twenty forty, the yearly savings to the village will be in excess of three hundred thousand dollars. Um, and I think those are the highlighted things. I think also, we've, for, for a small village, offer a very competitive defined contribution program. We, we have six percent of the pay automatically going in, but if an employee contributes, we established in two thousand eighteen the ability to, for an employee pre-tax money to go into a four fifty-seven plan. And if they at least do four percent, we throw an additional two percent in their defined contribution plan. So I'll pause there. I'm not quite sure what happened to the computer, if it was a connection or not, but those are the highlights. Yearly savings of forty-six thousand, liabilities ended in twenty fourteen, or twenty forty. And at that time, the village will be saving over three hundred thousand dollars a year. Under, uh, Siegfried Crandall, we did that, this at the start of the meeting. We also started to, to utilize Siegfried Crandall on a monthly basis where they help with all of our, our financials. I'm very confident in the team we've assembled here in the Village of Vicksburg. But I think it's important for a minor investment that's covered by the seven funds of the village. Uh, that's an amount that won't exceed twenty-seven thousand five hundred dollars. It, it was during COVID, a lot closer to twenty thousand dollars in the current fiscal year, but we're budgeting in twenty-seven five, to have those certifications and have our taxpayers know that an independent third, party who works strictly for them, not for any of us staff members, uh, verifies everything. Um, and I'm, if anyone has any questions at any time, flag a hand or be happy to, uh, alright. So, on, um, then what we have is the two addendums that we've, MERS has, uh, I told, this, it's been about fifteen years since these were updated, the, the, so they do look for council action that approves the village manager to sign, these, but nothing changes in the programs that we offer. It just updates their paperwork, both for the defined benefit and defined contribution addendums, which, uh, was sent out in the packet. They would be available if the public wanted to see a copy. There's nothing to, on, on those, and they were part of the, uh, packet that anyone's asked for would get, so instead of reading them, um, I'll pause, see if there's any questions. Um, and then, Mr. Frisbee, I'd like to, if, if the council desires it, or, or, to have a, a motion of support up through, that ten D as ten E as a standalone resolution and ten F as a standalone resolution that we would do separate.
We'll do that. So that would take us, for the staff recommendations totaling three hundred twenty-five thousand five hundred, for the, um, twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two, uh, for the parks, historic village. The park, the Sunset Lake, Clark Park, Dogway Station, Smoking Stations, uh, the retirement, employee retirement, MERS benefits. Uh, Siegfried Crandall maintaining them, uh, for the year, not to receive twenty-seven thousand five hundred. And MERS adoption, defined benefit, defined contributions addendums. So we have that in front of us. The staff would like, um, approval on such, so I ask the council's pleasure.
Trustee Keller, so move as presented.
Reaster support.
Motion made by trustee Keller and supported by trustee Reaster. Seeing no other questions or comments, conversation, roll call, vote, will be, uh, trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes.
Okay. On ten, E is a resolution involving, uh, park rules. And real quick, it's whereas the Village of Vicksburg Code of Ordinance, Chapter forty-two governs parks and recreation, and whereas Section forty-two twelve, under Rules and Regulations states, the village manager may adopt such rules and regulations for the operations of village park and recreation areas, as shall be necessary to protect the public morals, health, safety, and general welfare, including but not limited to the preservation of all village parks and recreation areas as clean, safe, pleasant places for the enjoyment, enjoyment of all citizens. Such rules, such rules and regulations shall become effective upon the approval of the village council and shall be posted, conspicuous spaces and places within each park. The rest is stated where you can read, but I thought it was important cuz what we want are these signs, are some of the park rule signs in each of the parks don't even read the same currently. So, um, I just wanted to cite whereby ordinance, this is governed by the village. Does, uh, I have attached the twenty-two rules. So I realize that some of the parks will have no boat launching, as there's nowhere to launch a boat. But we're gonna have a consistent sign for all of our parks, and that's why we've incorporated the twenty-two rules, into one sign. Be happy to answer any questions on those.
I think it's pretty straightforward, Jim. I, you know, I can't imagine anybody having any problems understanding what they need to do in the park, so. Well done.
Thank you.
Hey Jim, trustee Keller, real quick. Just to clarify, because we, obviously, not this year, yeah, but the Lions typically hold their summer festival at the pavilion. I, I'm a.
Oh, Jim, you're muted.
Yeah, I'm just switching some things off at my house to get this internet freed up.
Did you hear my question?
I, I heard up into the Lions Club.
Well, we have our summer festival, not this year unfortunately, but, because we have at the pavilion, we do have music. I mean, it doesn't say, it just says music device, musical device.
All of the special events. All of the special events are governed by the special events request, and in another section of the ordinance, the village councils, when they approve the request, that will supersede the, this ordinance or rule.
Thank you. I'm gonna get asked, that's why I'm asking.
Yeah, no, the council, that'll happen on the approval of each separate event request.
I think that's a good question, though, Carl.
My club would be very upset.
Now they'll be able to continue and be able to have the beer out there as well.
Yeah, it's, it's also, possessor, possess or consume alcohol, liquor without license. So that there would be multiple impacts. But I thought I did read somewhere within that, and it called out, um, special events, but maybe that was a policy I was reading, but.
Yeah, I remember reading it.
I think it's covered everything. I, I couldn't think of anything that I possibly do there that would get me into trouble that hasn't been covered. This rules and policies, who I think you've done a, a good job, and I like the consistency throughout the parks regardless of.
I do too.
Launch or not, it's, uh, one consistent rule and regulation. You don't have to worry where you're at and what you're doing, it's pretty obvious.
Julie, did you have a question?
Yeah, I just had a quickie. Number twenty-two, no boat launching or landing or fishing in designated beach swam here. I a hundred percent agree with that. The only question I had is the kayakers, so, that's non-motorized, like a kayaker or canoeer. Do you prefer that they go to the boat launch?
Well, we're gonna.
News, or can they be like off sides?
No, we're gonna try to identify a kayak launch area that's outside of the beach area, kind of. It would be to the south of the beach area.
Okay, good, okay.
Jim, uh, it's Denny. This has to do with the parks and it doesn't, but, um, the deck at Sunset Lake that needs to be replaced, where are we at on that right now?
Uh, we're still trying to get, uh, contractor to bid on the job. I did have a contractor who didn't want, to do that work. Fell the, it, it, it's aged, but it's, it's stable and, and doesn't need to be, uh, disused or anything, so.
Okay, alright.
Any other questions or comments? If not, the. Ryan?
It's a long list, yeah.
Uh, so the staff is asking for a resolution approving the, uh, village park rules, Vicksburg, village park rules as stated, uh, in what's the council's wishes.
I, I'll move to approve and adopt the twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two fiscal year village park rules, as stated in Resolution zero six zero seven two zero two one dash zero one.
Question by Gil Reiser.
Trustee Wagner, I'll support.
Support by trustee Wagner.
Okay, the motion made by trustee Reaster and supported by trustee Wagner. Here, no further conversation or questions. Major Creed list here. Roll call on this motion, trustee Olson.
Uh, yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Reaster.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Frisbee.
Yes. So the next item on is a, uh, resolution, uh, modification of the Village of Vicksburg Social District Plan. As per the vote from our last meeting, uh, Mr. Malley's staff went back and addressed the smoking issue, and has come up with this, uh, resolution.
Yeah, there is a couple of things that helps us because there's the plan that, for the social district that's filed with the state of Michigan. So to have a formal resolution when we're, we're modifying that plan to file with them. We also, uh, met with president Frisbee and trustee Reaster, having a conversation based on the conversation at, at the last couple council meetings. So this is a resolution that allows, um, as, as you can read and when it was established on May first, twenty twenty, and where the village council determines best interest of the village to prohibit smoking in the common areas during operations, social district. And that the social district plan shall be modified to include the language that says, smoking is prohibited in the common areas during operational social district hours, except, in designated smoking areas. Uh, we did send out a map, um, which, believe if I can. Hopefully I have it here somewhere. In the side, the social district, uh, this resolution would approve designated smoking areas in Liberty Lane West, which we will end up putting, in case people wanted to enjoy eating from one of the restaurants and partaking in, smoking, we'll end up putting a couple, uh, tables and chairs on that side, as well as what we're calling the front diamond area down by the subway main streets. But we've also identified where the village will invest, purchase and smoking, dispensary devices which are listed as the smoking butt huts, in the green areas that fall even outside of the social district. So I'll be happy to pause there and answer any, uh, questions.
I think that that was a pretty fair compromise. I think that that was a pretty fair compromise based on the conversations we've had.
Me, too. Makes sense.
As as we discussed, you know, in prior meetings, I believe you. Put the areas out there and the smokers will migrate to it, you know, or most of them are pretty respectful people and. You just give them a place to gather and then and that's where they'll go. So I I do agree. It's a. It's a. It is a good fit for the downtown area, I believe.
And it also commits, I think, to us investing in putting where people are properly disposed of. Something and easier to manage for DPW and that as well.
Right.
Well, and it just it takes away questions. I mean, it's set up so that people know where they're supposed to go, so.
Yeah. Again, I Julie, I.
I just was curious, what how is a what does a butt hut look like? In the sense, is it one of those? You know, urn shaped things with a little hole in it, or is it more elaborate?
No, that's exactly what it is. I think there's a couple right now out in the downtown area.
Yeah, yeah, there. That would be great because I picked up like hundreds of cigarette butts outside of Jazz Bears.
Yeah.
Hundred, and it's really gross, so that would be cool.
It is gross. I agree with you.
Discussion on it. The staff is asked for a resolution to the modification to the district plan. What is that? So it's pleasure.
Trustee Keller, so moved.
Trustee Olson, second.
Motion is made to support the resolution by trustee Keller and supported by trustee Olson. Here, no further conversations. The roll call vote. Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Reister.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. Well, that resolution passes.
Yeah, the one thing I will mention to the council that on June twenty-eight that we're going to also propose and recommend within the budget. Not specifically within parks and rec, but but to be aware of to identify. Specific areas within the village, basically where the entering the village limit signs are on Silver Street, Highway Street. Both at the east and west side, as well as the. Trail end where the car wash used to be, Liberty Lanes, east and west. To have money where we. Go out to bid and look for a landscape company to to outsource that. So each year. They would be responsible to come in at the spring. Spruce them all up, do what landscape companies do, and then throughout the year. Like larger corporations or bigger companies do manage the weeds, manage the look and stay on top of that, be it that they're all gateways into our city. We're investing quite a sum of money to have these downtown streetscapes and hopefully this park be pulled off. And we just feel it is an area that to invest outsourcing would be beneficial to the village. So. I am waiting on a couple different people to give me a high altitude number of what I'm looking at, but. Either June twenty-first or June twenty-eighth, I'll specifically mention that item as well. For council approval, but I wanted to at least because it kind of fit tonight's conversation, tell you what we're working on. Having said that, if you're okay, Mr. Frisbee, I'll go to the update on the village manager's report. Yes, please. The infrastructure project is moving forward. It's nice to see we put initial pavement down on Spruce Street up to Division, so. It's limiting the dust and and that in that area and the projects moving forward. We do have an item that's come to my attention. I've asked for some additional information, a couple of things, and I have mentioned it to some council members. We previously spoke about Prairie Street where the need was. To to get thirty-eight residents on an appropriate non-led service line, which that has been done and accomplished. It was interesting, I had information from one of the residents there. That spoke so highly about how their water pressure has completely changed getting on that that newer service line. So that was nice. We did identify the next step, though. Davis Street, which is a street that runs from Prairie to State in front of stubbies. It has all documentation. There was a water main on that street. We've. Demonstrated proven whatever we want to say, there is no water main that closes that loop. And by closing the loop, again, in layman's terms, we want the water to continually circulate within our system. Currently not having that water main pipe there. It's causing the water to become stale and at the dead end points. We. Right now, it's looking at with the equipment already in place, no mobilization fee, but the purchasing of of those additional pipes. It would be an amount not to exceed forty-five thousand dollars. I am having a financial analyst, you know, to look at to make sure it doesn't impact rates. I believe it doesn't. And I anticipate notifying the contractor to proceed forward with that work under the emergency purchasing policy. And then report back at the next council meeting on the the finite details. I. Again, I'm fairly certain it will not impact utility rates, and the chance that it does. I will come back to the council to inform you. Asking, but like I say, if it doesn't impact utility rates, I'm going to authorize the work to move forward, and that's just one more step. That we're we're. Committed to doing it right, that and that'll be a forever. Way to go, so. The other thing I have, and Alex Lee has a short thing, is today and the rain impacted it. We had been waiting. For our last loads of mulch to to get into town, but downtown, you'll start to see the final intersections covered with mulch that'll all be in place for the car show. Both at Maine and Prairie down by the fire station in in front of Liberty Lane East, you'll see it also going out. Westbound on Prairie Street in front of Vickers and some different islands there. So we'll have another twenty-five yards of mulch here delivered in the next couple of days, and that work will be completed. So I'll pause there. If there's any questions or I'm going to ask Alex Lee to update you on, I see Julie Merrill, so I'll call on you. Alex Lee will be talking about Veterans Park. And also some some positive exposure we've had for the village, but go ahead, Julie.
On the mulch, so if they're gonna coat the the little gathering spots, are the is that gonna be reclaimed? And repurposed as we excavate everything out, twenty-five yards is a lot of material.
Yeah, it's throughout the village, but I but no, it's not. It's at those corners, it it's in the hundreds of dollars amount I would expense more than that just on staff salary and time and machinery. But and. When those corners get pulverized, isn't going to be right away, so I it'll have that look. I think I'll say for the majority of the summer, there will be a time, you're absolutely right, that that'll be going out with the rest of the materials.
Okay.
There there was a lot of conversation back and forth with Jim and I on that and. Being he's being the fiscal manager that he is, he really didn't. But. But the result is we have a big event coming to this community. I, you know, if it's four hundred dollars, six hundred dollars.
I thought it'd be a lot more money than that. Okay.
Well, it's a it's a worthy investment to make this community look good in the interim while we're.
Okay, if it's only, you know, under a thousand or something, I don't care.
As as Jim stated, though, I. We don't want to take it back out, right? The expense and the labor and the cost of our manpower to do that, it's worth it. Just hold up. When we're doing the streetscapes and move on.
Okay.
And trustee Keller here, I I will mention, I do appreciate that everything has been going on. Being the only council member that lives on the east side of town that's been affected by the big dig. I can tell you that the residents on this side of town are eagerly awaiting. For this area to get. Back to some semblance of normalcy. Unfortunately, we've had rain this today. And it looks like rain the next couple of days, so that's may. Maybe retract the schedule, but unfortunately, but when they've had good weather, they've been moving along pretty good.
Any other comments or questions, or we can move on to Mr. Lee? If none, all right.
President Frisbee, members of the council, thank you. Jim assigned me early on the task of reviewing our village parks. And assessing their use. In so doing, I mentioned to Jim that what we refer to as Veterans Park. Which consists of a small strip of land on the southern edge of Sunset Lake that contains nothing more than two benches and a beautiful view of the lake. It's a wonderful park asset to the village. It sits along the well-used path of joggers, bicyclists and walkers. And serves as a great gateway space into our downtown. But as a veterans park, it does not measure up. It lacks adequate space for events and adequate space for a memorial monument. Parking is non-existent. And there are a number of obstacles to accessibility. And since pointing out problems without solution is not acceptable on this team, I was assigned further work on that issue. I looked at our parks and properties for a space that might be used in a manner to properly function as or share with a fitting tribute to our veterans. After discussing this with our Parks and Recreation Committee. And doing a site visit with Aaron Gannett of that committee, we believe our historic village is a very good fit. It provides accessibility, visibility, affordability and versatility. I presented our idea to the Historic Society Board who called for a motion on the idea. And enthusiastically and unanimously supported that that idea be moved forward. So tonight we come before the council to ask for your support of the idea. And with it, we'll move forward forward with seeing what the possibilities can be. This does not mean a park will be ready for dedication in the immediate future. What it means is. We will put together a small committee and we will be back with updates and to seek input. On a plan that fits comfortably within the historic village and provides an adequate space to honor all of our veterans, past, present and future. And if you're wondering why this article is in front of you right now. We had the good fortune, Mr. Gannett and I, of being in the historic village. When a photographer showed up along with the editor of Encore Magazine. So what was supposed to be a a quick picture shoot. And then a move on to Vandalia turned into about an hour and and a half of me opening buildings, letting them see the. The car in the garage, bringing them into the caboose, showing them where the breakman sat, looking for fires on the train. We had a wonderful conversation. And it resulted in this article in the current edition of Encore. It also resulted in a call from Encore Magazine asking for. Or asking us if the Village of Vicksburg would like to be a dispensary point for the magazine, which, of course, we certainly do. They're currently being distributed out of the Rise and Dine Restaurant. But I believe the plan is to put one of those weatherproof dispensers. In our downtown area, so our residents can see the magazine, and we're certainly. Positioned to be a big part of fewer two articles as well. So if you have any questions on the article or the. The Veterans Park and Memorial, I will do my best to answer those.
Are you saying that this that 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 was just up on the screen that that magazine is the Encore? That has the article in it? And we will have some out in the area so we can get our hands on them?
If you visit the Rise and Dine, you will find a nice stack right inside the door.
Okay, thank you.
I appreciate that, Alex. I guess my only ten seconds worth is I last month, two separate times. We've been on WKZO in the morning during their drive, time highlighting some movement in the village and. And I think it's outside of the Village of Vicksburg. We are. Truly beginning to get recognized at the momentum that's been created in the direction we're going in. So it's. Nice having lived in this area for now twenty-four years to have. Consistent, positive messages about this village. So that'll conclude our report tonight, Mr. Frisbee.
Thank you, Jim. Thank you, Alex. I think it's a phenomenal idea, and I appreciate the time and effort you put into the Veterans Park task. I know it's. A lot of different entities that you have to discuss and get consensus and approval with, and. I my admiration goes out to you for sticking with it and making it happen as quick as you you have. So. Kudos to that job. I think everyone on the call is. Probably agrees and would would agree with you that we we need a bigger and bolder veterans recognition in in this town and. Albeit that area that it is now is a beautiful setting. And just to be sure that that will continue to be. A Vicksburg Park. The way it is now, it'll just not have the Veterans Park designation on it anymore. Questions about that for Alex or questions for staff?
Yeah, was Alex, were you asking for a resolution tonight in in that request there or just informing us of the progress so far?
I'm just asking for support, however, the council feels that's appropriate.
Sounds good.
Yeah, I think it's a great job, Alex. Thank you for all the hard work.
Go for it.
Let's just take this make a if if someone is so inclined to just make a motion of a resolution to support.
Trustee Wagner, I'll make that motion.
I'll support it. Reister.
All right. Trustee Wagner is making a motion to support the movement of Veterans Park over to the Historic Village grounds. It will not be a resolution, it'll just be a motion of support. And that was trustee Reister with the second. Here, no further conversations. Roll call vote, trustee Merrill.
Yes.
Trustee Olson.
Yes.
Trustee Keller.
Yes.
Trustee Wagner.
Yes.
Trustee Reister.
Yes.
President Frisbee.
Yes. And I and I believe if if clarifications need, it may come in front of us. Again, once again, please for voting resolution on that, but it just I do to hear our support for what you've done and where you're going. And we can communicate that with the rest of the entities you have to deal with. So thank you for that. Mr. Mallory, was there was that the end of?
Yeah, that'll complete us. We'll move to, I didn't have any notice of committee reports, but I think Ms. Trustee Olson might have something, so.
Yeah, I got a couple. South County Fire, I talked with Chief McMillan before the meeting tonight. They're still pulling in over a hundred calls a month. So nothing big, nothing major. Here, but they did have a fire out in Waukesha Township that started from a broken electrical line, so. It even though we're getting rain, it's still very dry out there, and my concern is for the Fourth of July on fireworks, but. We'll cross that bridge next month. CATS meeting, we had our first open meeting. In the pavilion. Out on H Avenue with the at the Comstock Park out there. I I forget the name, but it's right next door to Echo Valley. And Fred Upton showed up and gave us updates. On local road and highway projects, including they're not talking about rebuilding US one thirty-one. On the north end of Callum, the zoo. on the north end of Callum Zoo. Uh, the big thing he did state is that the president's federal gas tax was shot down. Our president was looking for somewhere between 25 and 50 cents a gallon for, uh, federal gas tax. Um, so, so far Congress has shot that down. Um, and that's about it. So, um, it, it was five years ago today that the bicycles were killed on the north end of Callum Zoo. And, um, I think it's an important thing that we remember that, um, that incident has changed bicycling in this county. And, um, um, so they are working to improve everything downtown Callum Zoo more for bicyclists and this and that. They're still talking about going to two-way streets in downtown Callum Zoo. Um, so that's all in the works and we're going to see it, the big changes in the next few months. So, thank you.
Thanks, Danny. Carl, did you have?
Yeah, I attended the, uh, South County Sewer and Water Authority meeting a couple of weeks ago. Uh, the biggest thing out of that, uh, just so everybody is aware that Barton Lake, which Jim is probably well aware, they're, they're, uh, trying to get, they're getting a committee forum to, uh, do explorations on getting a sewer run out to Barton Lake and they'll be, they'll be in communications at some point with the village on what the impact would be with us, working with them on that project. You know, what, what the fees would be and all that stuff. So it's going to be down the road, but that, that, that came up in the meeting. Um, Mike McCaws was a, was a, a spokesperson for the lake group out there. Um, he kind of filled us in on what they've been doing. So just wanted to pass that along that at some point that'll move forward.
So, so the council's aware, I, I do live on Barton Lake, uh, with my residents, but I have nothing or no part of the committee out here or the board and have advised them that I will keep with my position in the village on this issue as they move forward.
Thanks for that. That's why I didn't bring your name up, Jim.
Thanks for that, Clark. So if that's, uh, that's it, wrap up with, with trustees time. Trustee Merrill, since you have such a good connection, we'll let you go first.
Oh gee, yeah, I do have a good connection being back here. Um, no, it's, it's really nice to be back and I really miss, miss the town and everybody in it. So it's just good to be back. And I really have to get out and look at all the things that are going on like, uh, Carl Street. So I'll be checking that out anyway.
Mine down. Mine down. Thank you, Carl.
Okay.
Bring your four wheeler. Yeah. I knew that was coming.
Trustee Olson.
So, um, real quick, I spoke with Jim about this earlier, um, while, while last week, and we had another incident at, uh, Michigan and Highway Street again. I believe it was Memorial Day morning. Uh, and I, I spoke with Tim about it too. Um, and I've talked to Jim about this a couple of times about putting four-way or, um, flashing, um, stop signs on, on that corner. Um, that's a dangerous corner. We've had several incidents there, including a couple of deaths. Some of it can be prevented, some of it can't. My biggest fear is somebody blowing through that stop sign and taking out a minivan with a mom, dad and kids in it. Um, so Jim has told me he's going to look into that and some other stuff. So, um, I think it's something we have to take a serious look at. So anyhow, but thank you.
Thanks, Danny. Trustee.
Um, I just, um, very, very excited about what the village is doing right now and, and all of the improvements that we're making and thrilled to hear that somebody, I know what that person meant when they said they got that new line in and all of a sudden they had water pressure again. Um, it, it is, it's a huge thing. Um, so I'm glad that they're noticing, um, some positive things from all of that bad stuff that's going on with all the tearing up and so forth. Um, but I, I'm just very excited about being a part of this village right now.
Trustee Wagner.
All set, Tim. Thank you.
Present pro temp, Keller.
Uh, just real briefly, Officer Serson, I want to, I want to thank, uh, for the time that you and your officers a couple of weeks ago spent. Uh, my neighbor across the street, uh, passed away and, uh, I happened to be coming home and saw several, several police cars out in front and saw several EMS vehicles. And I knew right away, it was a gentleman that he just lost his wife in January and, and I, I shoveled his driveway every winter time for him so he wouldn't have to. He was a longtime resident, former, uh, Simpson Paper employee. So, um, I just want to say thank you. I, I know an officer stayed until arrangements were made and I appreciate what you did. So, thank you.
Yeah, thank you from all of us. I don't think I left anybody out. So, uh, I had, I had a couple of quick things, you know, we hadn't had a, uh, a resident call in, uh, lately on, into one of our meetings, but, you know, I just want to reinforce, you know, our proceedings, our etiquette for council proceedings that we would, uh, if we do have people calling in, we just want to thank them, you know, and address, and, and address their, their issue. Thank you for bringing it up. Uh, we don't want to address them by name. We don't want to get into discussion. If you feel it's warranted, we take on further discussion, advise them that we take it up with staff and, and just, we don't want to get into a point where we're having these long discussions with residents on, on our council meetings. Uh, second is, you know, I've talked to each one of us, each one of you all individually. And the thing I want to address is that we don't ever bring up a village resident by name, right? We, we can discuss the questions, we can discuss, discuss the, the issues at hand, but we don't ever want to call somebody out by name. It just, it's just proper etiquette and it, and it helps, helps from embarrassing ourselves down the road. Um, and, uh, the infrastructure, you know, we're going to see that. We have 80-year-old systems. I know Jim brought it up again tonight. Um, we're in a good position. We're getting ahead of the state mandate for the lead lines, which is good, but it's also going to impact us from a timing and cost standpoint. So we've got 80 years of unknown that, that, that no loop line we're having to address. These are all the right things to do, but it's, we haven't seen the end of it. So we have to do our due diligence and, uh, and watching our cost control, which I know the, the staff is doing. And in the, in the end of the last meeting, you know, uh, I'm learning more and more about my role and what I say and what is printed in the newspaper. And although be very accurate about my stern comment last week, uh, it was more around my frustration. Uh, we as a team knew the direction. The irony of the whole discussion we had last meeting is that we are right where we wanted to be without that. We, we knew we'd get to the end result, we all would agree on. It is our right, it is every one of your rights as a council member to bring a motion to the table. I'll never, I'll never dispute that. But my frustration was just, I knew we would be at the end of the, at the end of the road where we all wanted to be and hence where we're at tonight. So I appreciate everybody's time and, uh, and effort and, you know, your, your dedication to this community. It really shows where we're going as a community. As Gail said, I, I'm hearing so much from outside. I, you know, as I talk to people in Battle Creek, a developer in Battle Creek, we're working with, uh, just a lot of positive, positive news for the village right now. And that's what we want to maintain. So with that, that's all I had. If, if no one had any else, uh, entertain a motion to adjourn the meeting.
Don't move.
So I, I, my computer recognized trustee Merrill with the motion supported by trustee Reister. All those in favor can say aye.
Aye.
Anyone that would like to stay on the meeting can oppose it. Here's that it passes, Mr. Frisbee.
Thank you all very much for your time tonight. Good job.
Thanks, everybody. Take care.
Good night.